The task of not wearing regular sessions on item number four. And in reference to what we would have referred to appoint Dr. Gregory Rolfe, who is currently the medical director for the ambulance, to be the local, uh, South County health authority. To be employed as a county employee for a period of two years as requested by that statute, uh, with applicant benefits. And Mr. Thomas is in a right state employment contract, county salary and benefits of a hundred thousand dollars per year. Mr. Rolfe Rolfe has been a medical director in Northeast Mountain Hospital, vice chairman of the medical center. He's been assistant medical director for all three, he's been at the E D in San Antonio, next hospital, the McHenry Hospital, Valverde Hospital, and it just goes on. He continues to be an emergency medical, um, emergency room doctor and is continues to practice. Uh, throughout the practice, and he has a lot of resume. But he has been serving the South County for a number of years now.
Number six.
Huh? Number six. So we would need a motion to appoint Dr. Gregory S. Rolfe. And a second.
Go ahead and make that motion, sir.
The motion is made, second. And I know many people are not familiar with this, there's quite a bit of information out there. But, um, we have such a delay in getting information from the state on, on, um, positive cases. Uh, the sheriff has agreed, the manager's agreed, City Council has taken initiative and agreed to assign a person to the task force to be able to do the site backtracing and work with Dr. Rolfe and making sure we contain this. So, uh, you see, seeing some changes, pretty fast. There's a motion, the second on the floor. All those who favor say aye. All those who oppose, same time. Motion carries.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm here.
I'm going to jump to your items.
Okay.
Number seven, number eight, number nine, and, uh, number five.
Okay.
Let's go, uh, does he have a contract, is there a change order for Anderson Columbia?
Yes, sir, he's on the, uh, Anderson Columbia, Jerry Carrillo's on the, on the actual Zoom as well. So thi- this is what we're proposing is change order number three. This, this is the final change order required for the job, including any reconciliation of all the quantities, final quantities as installed. And there's a component of this that's, uh, part of the actual ditch work that is necessary on I thirty-five on the south side on the frontage road. So, uh, initially they're going to go ahead and proceed with the work, uh, but being that the, the amount of the work that was necessary was a little bit more extensive. So they came back and proposed that we issued as a change order just so that we don't have such a huge fluff and, and reconciliation of quantities at that line item. So right now, though, if you look at the original or the latest contract amount, there's been allotted, it's fourteen million, that's what's currently in place. Fourteen million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven and thirty-six cents. Uh, with this reconciliation of all the final quantities and all the additional ditch work that's required, it would increase by a matter of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, ninety-eight and seventy-four cents. If, if we need to go into detail as to where it is and what we need to do, uh, I can do that as well, but really what I wanted to get with the commissioner's court and, and the county was, this is to close out the job. Uh, this will, uh, close out anything pending, uh, on the ditch work. Uh, everything else is, is complete. There's some punch list items that are still required. Uh, but this would allow the contractor to move forward and finalize whatever's pending on the ditch work, uh, if, if the commissioner shall choose. But, uh, just to give you an update, the, the total, it would, it would, uh, the percentage of increase from the original contract form we started in two thousand seventeen to now, with this change in reconciliation of quantities, it would be up to four point eight percent. So for a job of this, this magnitude, I think it's pretty reasonable where, where we ended up being at. So, um, at this point, what we're looking for is, uh, we're recommending, uh, from SMB, we're recommending approval so that we can, uh, close out the, all the quantities, all the, everything that's pending. And, uh, talk to, the reason I have Anderson Columbia here present with us as well is they wanted to, to, uh, give me the commitment that if it is approved for the additional ditch work, it would begin on Monday. I know right now it's raining and there's a lot of issues with weather, but it would begin on Monday, be done by the Saturday of next week. Uh, and they would mobilize all their units to, to close out this job. But in addition to that, we're still going to go through the final hoops, which is, uh, close out as built, all the paperwork necessary. But right now, just to get this thing finalized, I do need authorization if the county does so choose to, to do so.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, on, on this change order, it was on that, uh, on that, uh, relief route.
Can you repeat that?
It was, was the same order on the relief route.
Yes, this change, this change order is for the relief route. And if, I don't know if you're able to see my screen. I'm going to show you where this, where this additional work is just as a reference point. Uh, this, this, when, uh, if you do see my screen, this is showing the ditch on the south side of, uh, off thirty-five. This is where there's an existing fiber optic line that's right parallel to a channel that we, uh, that's still pending to be constructed. So this is just giving you an idea of where this work will, will, what's remaining, everything in this general region. And it is, like I said, this is a small component, this is a component of the actual final number, but I wanted to make sure the commissioners and everybody knows what, what this is for and where is it going.
They're going to put concrete right there, okay?
Yes, sir, it's, it's still, it's going to be a concrete line channel all the way past that, uh, you can see a truck on that picture, it's going to go all the way. And, and I'll show you, this is what it looks like in plan view. We see the channel going all the way to the end. Now, like I said, this, some of this work was originally in the scope of work, uh, but we're having to extend it further out. There's an existing fiber optic line that was in conflict that we redesigned to avoid it. Uh, and this would, this would, um, would daylight the water going south. So, uh, this is all in the state right away as well, just to give everybody a clear picture. But in addition, this is just the component to close out with all the quant, final quantities on the job and the additional work. We still have here, and if you can see my screen, we still have the punch list that's, most of it is complete. There's still some items that are, they're having to be verified. Uh, but for the most part, a lot of this work is, has been completed. And like I said, I have Anderson Columbia here present. Uh, I, I would like, if you all have any questions for me or for them, they, they can be here to answer them as well. Cause I do know this is one of the oldest jobs we have on the books and our goal is to, to close it out and move on and on and on.
The, the last change order you did was in two thousand nineteen, probably middle of summer too, right?
Can you say that again?
Um, the last change order was, was, was number two, was done last year. In the past summer, maybe even in the spring.
Yes, sir, the last change order was, uh, a year ago, uh, about a year, a little over a year ago. And the idea was, uh, to extend it to, uh, it was additional contract time and some, some changes on paint. Uh, I know we talked about the colors of the, of the final painting and everything that needed to, to take place, so.
Um, you reached a substantial completion?
They, they reached substantial completion in May. Now, we haven't closed out the job, so once this work, if approved, goes through, uh, and all the, the punch list done is, is complete, then we can, uh, finalize the contract and begin the warranty period. That's part of the whole close out documentation that's necessary.
What is the importance of this change order?
I'm sorry?
On this change order, there's a great looking amount.
The total is, uh, it would be an increase of contract, the current contract, and I repeated the contract, current contract amount that's currently authorized as of change order number two, is fourteen million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven and thirty-six cents. This increase with the final quantities, which include all the overages on some walls, earthwork, all the different things from the last two, three years, and including this additional ditch work, the final change, if approved, would go to fourteen million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents, which is an increase of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
A hundred and seventy thousand?
I'm sorry, I, I missed that last question.
A hundred and seven, a hundred and seventy thousand?
A hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Um, is this included in your any of your contracts, your late charges?
So right now, it's since they've substantially been completed as of May, they're asking for, uh, the number of days from August the third through, and I'll tell you, August the third through the ninth, which is a Sunday, to complete the pending items and complete.
Number, in reference to substantial completion, you know, you issued that already, but up to the point of substantial completion, we knew that there were some times that were held. Did you apply any passive delay charges or have negotiated those before the approval of change order four?
No, we haven't negotiated any other change order days as of that, as of now. That's why there's no activity out there aside from them keeping up with some of the travel, uh, lighting, stuff like that. So that's why you haven't seen any activity, because they're waiting on approval on this. So this work was going to take place back in May, uh, but being the nature of the additional work and the amount, uh, they decided to submit a paperwork, uh, for a change and, and we're, now we're here.
And, and what would happen? You have an idea of how much you think the late charges are? Or would you think you're going to need agreement? Or is that something that you want to speak to the contractor separately?
Well, uh, I, so part of this discussion could also be, and, and it's, it's part of the change order is, as of May, uh, the closed out substantial completion, there's a hundred and two, uh, delay days, liquidated damage days that are needing to be discussed. Uh, the total is at a thousand dollars a day, a hundred and two thousand dollars. If so, the county does choose to pursue them. Uh, I know that, I don't know if it has to be a separate item, separate vote, but, uh, that is something that also does need to, to come to the table, uh, in discussions with Anderson. Uh, they may not agree with all those numbers, there's other delays that they may, uh, bring up, but that's what we're proposing.
I would suggest, Mr. Martinez, that we come back and table this item and meet with Mr. Ramos and try to negotiate something. Change order number four, in, final, that way we don't have to go back and recover. So if you give them more money than you're trying to recover it, you know, then come to a decision, uh, of a good combined decision. Because sometimes we think it's not a red day, but for them it is, because based on the national number. So, you know, and you're more able to figure that out. And you also inherited the project halfway from Mr. Gilpa. So it's possible to figure out and make sure that he didn't previously give them some information, uh, and get those back to you too.
Okay.
And I don't use it, but if they owe us money, which they want us to fix it, but they never know what's money, it can be, might be hard to collect. So let's just come to an agreement that, for the final. It's a very small amount for the amount of, uh, it's a very small amount for the amount of budget. But I don't think it's too many, call it out, which is wrong.
So you can figure out the difference?
Yeah. So I would say table it for weeks, let's hear next week sometime. But they do the, what's going to be in the lego, depending on, on what they can, come up with a good agreement. But given the contractor's benefit of doubt, maybe we're claiming a red day. That really isn't a, I mean, you make sense, it's not a red day, but you're reporting a red day and we want to be fair. Because we want Anderson to come back and do it, but I'd rather get it all addressed out of respect for your company, sir. You know, because, uh, I know you're a very good company, but I'd, I'd rather get it all worked out at one time, that way we don't have, uh, you know, any fixing back and forth.
And then they've committed, uh, depending on the outcome, like if they want to get started, it'd be done. They've, they've said that commitment, but obviously at the end of the day, it's the commissioner's court decides how they want to move forward. Uh, if you want to move it to another item, table it. We can discuss it in more detail if we need to, uh, however, however the court decides.
Okay. And then we'll come back and do the decision on. Motion to the main, second table. All those who favor say aye. On number nine, this is about lack of, uh, recording and authorizing awards of material for Tina Rancro.
As, just to give an update, that item, uh, it's advertising this week, so it won't, it will come back. So you can table that out, there's no action needed. Uh, once the advertisement happens this Thursday for two weeks, we'll come back with, uh, precinct two and precinct three material bids for presentation.
On, on that one, okay, uh, since it's not on the, on the Gilda, we were going to go and put bids for, uh, Cochina Road and Kruger and Boket, but it is not in Gilda, we will be able to, but it's not a base.
Like, you can authorize that, you just need to open them in forty, whatever the rules you want. But we just have to break it up with, with support.
Okay, I want to make sure that people know that.
Yeah. So if the following two papers, any consecutive days that it's, that's competitive, bid, then you're fine. So if you added off a little, I don't know, you did, okay?
Uh, so this one is advertising starting this week, is, is that what I heard?
There's only two roads?
There's three, it's going to be La Cochina, uh, Cocote and, uh, Kruger for precinct number two. And there's going to be some other ones for precinct number three.
Just when we put on the Gilda after your bid runs out after the deadline, we will put on the Gilda to put all those three roads, the stuff that did some work. But if one of the notice went out, then we'll be fine.
Okay, so there's no action on this one?
No action. Now, discussion possible action. For discussion, number seven, discussion and/or approval of advanced funding agreements with State Department, transportation for Bridgeline through River and in Jardine. Uh, in Elm Creek Bridge at SM thirty-four away and Alakim Road, with a county contribution of ten percent. And I included a package of topiary draft funding agreement. And we're trying to get Cochina Road and Gata committed, but they still haven't told us a yes or no. Because when we met up last year, we told them there was a platform, what do you do with it? So, Mr. Martinez, what do you think is going to happen on Cochina?
So Cochina, there's, there's, there's two bridges, uh, they're still working on trying to get it funded. They haven't reached out to me. I'm working on getting them a list of all the projects that are upcoming to make sure we get credit for them in the meantime. But they have not reached out, they got it funded yet. They're looking to try to get the one that's a Brin Sap bridge, uh, funded, so that's the first step. Uh, the, these two agreements that you have in front of you, they're the ones that already were selected. It's, uh, the one on Holland Dam on Elm Street, Elm Creek, I'm sorry. And the other one is for, um, the Freel Bridge at El Jardín. And like, like the judge said, this is a ten percent match, uh, for the county for this, this funding. As of now, they do have estimates on here and, and they do have an estimated amount for each one of the participation by local government.
On the off system bridge, and our new project for Michigan twenty percent. But we've been doing some of the projects, we've been complaining that on this off system, they haven't awarded us in over ten years. Last year, the new, the off system program was on Holland Dam Road, the first one for the Hitzin. That's the last one they did, then it won, it longer than that. We put in two thousand and three, I would be big with it, the two thousand and ten. That's, uh, Minnondale Bridge, that's the Minnondale Bridge, that's the Minnondale. But what happened with this is the one on Freel Bridge was closer to the margin of the bridge. And then this other one, thirty-four away, it's from thirty-four late here and it hits in the Ida Cap. That one just cracked on it. But I'm also putting a lot of purchase, uh, to do Cochina Rancro, because I thought it would be really bad if you all have to close it and it's so bad they can't get into the ramp. You have to close it, that adds rental, the wall won't, I mean, very dangerous. So there's, there's scrambling to try to fund that one. But they're only making this to look with ten percent versus twenty percent on the other six ramps. Because we're no longer considering economics for that account. So what's going to happen? Commissioner, um, precinct three has a Minnondale Bridge, so you're going to have to secure it to a hundred thousand. Commissioner Ayala has a two hundreds, I mean, two Minnondale Bridge, you have to come up with two hundred dollars to get it done. And I think they have the funds. So I know, Mr. Commissioner, um, Ramirez, uh, I don't know if we can use, I know you're on. You want to get it done?
Yes.
You want to go on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's a standard funding agreement, it's a draft, it's not, they're giving funding, it's going to be, they're really going to do it, but but they need to know, you know, who want to fix it. There's other reasons they have to be responsible for it. But we put a lot of here, so this year, you got funded, now we hit. Of the seven million dollar trust, you also got another three million dollars over here. You got funded. You're the only one in, in, in the district who understands should be funded this year. But, uh, so we would need a motion to approve both funding agreements. One, one for, um, Holland Dam Road at Elm Creek, which is CJ zero nine two two dash two zero dash zero two one. And in Jardine Road at Blue River, and that is, um, number zero nine two two dash two zero dash zero two zero, with each precinct making a match, uh, with that contribution. So now you need to add in full a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner, Ramirez, you make the motion. Why don't you make the motion to the zone, which is allowed? Commissioner Ramirez made the motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? I want to give you copies of the draft copy, uh, but we will, so that you can see the original, okay, will you give it to me?
Yes, sir, as soon as we get a Mexico, I'll get, I'll get your copy for signature.
Okay, all those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We got distinct base discussion and a possible action to approve permission E, easily. And this one is this driveway permit precinct four. It's not a big goal, right, it's still not wrong? So, uh, nothing, is it not? That's the only one you have? Was it something? Or not? I don't know. It's not wrong. So we have a motion to authorize the permit in Kingdom McDonald on the minus seven hundred dollars for precinct number four.
Go ahead and make the motion to approve the permit.
Motion's been made, second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same time. Number six, discussion possible action on authorization of vehicle purchase for Indian Island Correction Center, three, three, approved. I am serious, you know, I didn't get them, someone asked me to table it. Because we approved her to buying a vehicle, um, if it had to be used to carry, whether it's not, you should help her. Uh, it's still falling waiting a bit, look like it's quality opening. But that's Monday, you guys remember, yeah? You have one van, you know, yeah, one van. But once the center's open, they're going to need a van to transport people, you still wait a little bit. There's a long queue that, because we're only going to deliver maybe.
But the next guy right now, is it a big van?
It's an angel, but you're going to get a little van that you can take the food, because that'll be, you care. And we had, we had approved it, we just took the money and the budget, but you have a couple estimates. But I asked her to pass a number of estimates to different people and she did, but I don't know. So I said, I'd rather wait, we get them all. Yeah, well, to give them, yeah, get them all. So, okay, whatever, so we do. I know they've worked on it and, and she might have probably dispatched them to Hoshi because they haven't been able to set up their self-own, often only the considering. So, so they're just moving it, but, you know, they can't find anything, they don't get it.
So they're going to get three branches yet?
I, I told you, you three branches, if, if they could, to give me the confirmation for these plastics to them. You know, to do, just, uh, to do, but she has another bike and she has a white wing and a black wing, which is a window. But I know this thing about the victory to make it, what did you contact, what did you contact, what did you send them? You know, we wanted all six cylinder, reasonable, you know, seven passengers, you know, kind of make them all three.
When you said black, a black van?
Well, she wants a white, she wants a white one, they only have a black one. This is a white one, but it's not.
Yeah, we need to get a white one.
White, you see me? They have each a black, this is black.
Yeah, that's what.
And, and, and.
Can I say? Let's look for those. Get a, uh, uh, get a white one.
Just get some other pricing.
Okay, go ahead and table.
Yeah, table number six.
I'm going to move to table number six.
Number table number six, motion for second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Number five, discussion possible action on La Bolita Hendrickson Road fencing on fence, uh, construction, installation in Calabar, reversion and manual, you know, construction work, I don't know, would he have to repair? Yes, sir, he did, he had things on, brother, he had there, like, uh, in the, in Halloween. And they tried following him, coming here, I don't know, I didn't give him, didn't find him. They're doing, they're doing, they're doing something else, but he used his own equipment or he hired Russell or something, that's it.
No, he, he did, I did follow him, it was not that they didn't find me. I did follow him, told him the shredder was down. And, uh, Danny told me, he said that he was going to go there. He wanted him to go ahead and do the clearing. And, and, I mean, he was, if you're willing to do a thing, you're not going to go with Sherwood, y'all, to go ahead and do that.
Or the reason they want to do it, we did, they only had thirty days to do that.
They had, they had thirty days to do the fence, the reason that I asked both contractors, how long will it take to do that fence? And both contractors said fifteen days. But when they told me fifteen days, I talked to Hope, not to Hope, go ahead and double the time. We gave them thirty days, that was more than enough time. It was not, they were short of time, I doubled the time that they said, that we had plenty of time to do the fence. And, uh, that, that we were expecting that this today. And I talked to three in weeks, that is just example of. And, uh, that, I wouldn't have expected that, so they, and I talked to three weeks, and he said he's happy with the fence, and, uh, I talked to my brother, and he said that, uh, he works for Lewis, and, uh, they had mentioned, uh, Porty talked to Oscar Martinez, and, uh, they went ahead and installed the first cattle guard, and, and, and it was the best idea, you know, since the ghetto, because they were gonna end up dealing their gate open, and the cattle were gonna be, end up back in the road, so Lewis installed that first cattle guard in, uh, for, in Johnny's field, that, 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 around the second cattle guard.
Yeah, the digging area was quality, and like with the snow, we're gonna put in the cattle guards. And most of the cattle guards in the county that we have, that I remember, that I know, is amongst the county. So we're still, what they call, uh, open range county. So that's why we go with the cattle guards, and, and, so, what did you hang to that for? There's a fourteen, there's a level in the middle, right, or, or y'all went with the cattle, but somebody go, or you do it for others? You know, so, that's what we were into.
But, uh, I went over there and I checked it, I went, I talked to Porty, I asked him, you know, he always said, he's got, he's everything, I think everything is good, ready to go.
So, so we got two parts, we got two portions, we got one, we re-revering, all re-reversing, just saying, hey, you don't re-rever, fine, you decide that, second thing, probably, we put in other cattle guards, and then so we have to go out for this.
The other three cattle guards going for it.
So you have, you have three names on the road, right?
So when you put, uh, when they wanted the two cattle guards, they're, they're, they're installing.
So you're using one cattle guard left?
Yeah, we lose it for one. Lewis, Lewis installed one, and that's good.
And Porty put another one.
Porty put that transfer for a lot.
So they, and they, all the cattle guards are put in?
Everything is put in, yeah.
Because he had, he had a little bit of a rough subject, he came out kinda pooping up, and he couldn't get out of there. And when we found, and when we found our, our response, you know, only thing they say, there's only one, there's only one that, the government, they need that re-rever, and it's something, uh, there's some reason the bill got misplaced, or it's Russell, not Russell, uh, I'm trying to think of, by a full of forty, I'm trying to think, guy, I think Russell, Roman, Roman? Russi, he's the only one that, that, that I know that didn't get re-revered, he didn't wanna resubmit a bill. But we reversed all the cattle guards, except that one, he didn't wanna resubmit the bill.
Yeah, we got, uh, a bill on the cattle guard, and, and F Porty did do an outstanding job. You know, he, they spread good, and there was a brush, I don't know what track, but he was, was plenty of brush. First, we tell him it was gonna be spreading, just because I would do it on fifteen feet from the road. But I guess when they surveyed, the only thing I'm thinking is, they went on the old road survey, I guess that was the right road. And it, it, it kinda widened out, that's the reason it, it kinda went into the brush. But Porty did an outstanding job of each village and everything, and they only started to apply the cattle order, the delivery of thirty-two fifty, and the labor can install twenty-eight fifty, and two gravel, two, uh, two loads of gravel, four per each. Um, I don't know if I think that there, but, 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 what, what, what I would do?
Cause I'd rather make a motion, authorize the need to go visit, we're doing, I just got to do today, this is the first time I can do the bill, it never can. You go talk to him today, what do you want, and then get a payment for it. And we can use the authority to go ahead and negotiate it, so the, it's not sixty, it's in my own. And then, and then money's that problem. And then that way, y'all, you guys don't even have one, and we don't wanna say what's wrong with you. So, so would, I would take that in full motion, Commissioner? Authorize, uh, from my John, something, um, provide a new one, and negotiate, uh, an agreement, and I'll be seeing it amount, okay, and just take it to the treasurer, I'll pretend that once you come up with, um, you know, you're out, like the fee, and that way you're comfortable, you just got the bill, and I'll put that in a formal board.
Thank you.
These people over there, yeah, the motion's been made in second. Any other discussion? All those with favorite say aye? All those opposed, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those with favorite say aye? Um, last name, we approved this, and here's the final.